I call the June 26, 2018, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And tonight, our invocation will be by Father Derek Harbin of St. John's Episcopal Church. And I'll ask my colleagues to stand for the invocation. And then Bill Moody, Councilman Bill Moody, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we ask your blessing on tonight's meeting of our city council. Pour upon our civic leaders the spirit of wisdom, discernment, compassion, humility, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve to promote the well-being and future of all the people of this community. All this, we pray, in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask my colleagues on council to participate in the electronic roll call. Please indicate your presence by hitting the yes button. And Madam Clerk, we have a forum.
Yes, sir.
The next item of business is the approval, the consideration of the approval of the minutes. And we have three sets: a call meeting of June 11, 2018; the call, the minutes of a call meeting of June 12, 2018; and the minutes of a regular meeting of June 12, 2018. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes? So moved. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
And Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is under the city manager's report and is item 18-234, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funds from the Port Norfolk-Wilson Ward and West Park View Civic Leagues in the amount of $4,771 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 General Fund for use by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services for the Neighborhood Incentive Grant Program.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ready for the question. All in favor, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Our next item is 18-235, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And would you read the title, the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $10,140 from the Virginia Tourism Corporation and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Marketing, Communications, and Tourism for a campaign to publicize the Portsmouth Cultural Arts District.
So that we can consider this matter as our motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ready for the question. All in favor, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Next item is 18-236, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And would you read the title of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $15,000 of funding received from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services to build capacity to address opiate abuse.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to 18-237, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. Would you read the title, the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the transfer of $149,410 from the non-departmental transfers and contingencies line item in the FY 2018 General Fund Budget to the contractual detention home line item in the juvenile court services category of the FY 2018 General Fund Budget.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter as our motion. Move adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made to adopt the ordinance and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-238, which is the consideration of adoption of another ordinance. Will you read the title, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to appropriate $33,675 of telephone communications revenue in the FY 2019 General Fund Operating Budget for use by the sheriff's office.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can consider this matter as our motion to adopt?
Move adoption.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion? And we do have one speaker, Mark Gudalgie-Yatroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow interested parties. I've spoken on this appropriation in previous years, and it's still troublesome to me because what this money reflects essentially is a profit on the phone system, the only phone system that's available to people who are housed in our Portsmouth jail. And there is a national movement to reform the way this type of service is provided. You know, in Virginia, although Virginia, along with its 12 sister-brother colonies, did separate from the old country back in the latter part of the 18th century, we still carry on some of the worst practices of what was the motherland. They too charged the people they incarcerated. So the punishment for whatever offense was really a multi-layered punishment. The incarceration itself and the imposition of fees and charges and chargebacks, usually to the people at the bottom end of the economic ladder. Well, with regard to these specific fees, I have had some conversations with our current sheriff, and I'm hopeful that in the future, this form of revenue to the sheriff's department will be lower than it is now. And that the people who are forced to use the house phone system, as it were, if they want to have any contact with their families, will get a better price for the use of that service. To me, this sort of, this sort of service, if you want to call it that, should be at cost. It should never be a profit-making enterprise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the part of council? Hearing none. Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-239, which is the adoption of another ordinance. And will you read the title of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Section 10-122 of Chapter 10 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, as amended to change the voting location for precinct number 39 from Riverside Baptist Church to Churchill and Primary and Intermediate School located at 5700 Hedrow Lane, and to formally change the name of the precinct number 39 to Churchill and Primary and Intermediate School.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter as our motion to adopt?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. If you're ready for the question, please vote yes. If you're in favor, no. If you're against. And the motion carries. Which brings us to 18-240, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the title to that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance establishing a monthly payment schedule for delivery of the city's local share allocation of the FY 2019 Portsmouth Public Schools Operating Budget.
So that we can consider this matter as our motion to adopt?
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, and we're ready for discussion. And we do have one registered speaker, and that is Mark Gudalgie-Yatroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow interested In one respect, I'm happy to see that you have changed your allocation approach for providing the schools the local funding that you budgeted. But it seems to me that the way you are allocating those funds, the way you are actually making the payment, is still trying to keep your control over what the school system is doing. I fail to understand why you would pay the monthly increment at the end of the month when the school board, which has no general fund, something council has, and which is responsible for turning over all unspent funds to the city at the conclusion of the fiscal year, which is coming up on the 30th, why you would not be paying that monthly increment on the first day of the month rather than the last day of the month? So do they tell their creditors, "Well, sorry, we can't make these checks good until city council gives us our allowance, $4.3, $4.4 million this month"? Why would you do that? Yes, they do get federal funds. Yes, they do get funds from the Commonwealth. I don't know what the schedule is for that. But with no fund balance of their own, how do they make timely payment for costs that are incurred from the beginning of the fiscal year to the first installment? And, you know, you kind of drove a few more nails into the coffin with your last reallocation of funds to the school board. First of all, you did it at the very last minute. You left them with very little time to spend that $850,000 before the clock runs out. And then, on top of that, you added a proviso that none of that money was to be spent for anything that occurs in the next fiscal year. So slam, slam, slam. All the doors are slammed shut. So how do they do it? They have employees who work 10 months of the year but are paid in monthly installments. So those 10-month employees have chosen to take a smaller amount throughout the year so they get a paycheck during the summer. How do they make those payments? You tell those people who have done this, have set aside income for this purpose, "Oh, yeah, you'll get your check after the last day of the month"? Seems totally inequitable to me. I hope there's a good explanation for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And the chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
I was going to say Dr. Patton, but Mr. Pace, do you know if the CFOs for the school system and for the city, I know during our budget season, there was discussion that they would meet on this schedule and agree. Do you know if that took place?
Mr. Pace.
Dr. Whitaker, I'll yield to Ms. Bybee to see if she can answer that question for you.
Ma'am, if you'll come to the lectern, please. The question is, have you and your counterpart talked about this schedule?
Okay. Good evening, Cheryl Spivey, CFO with the city. We, I have met with the CFO with the schools. I don't specifically recall whether we talked about this schedule, but we did talk about funding. One of the reasons, I mean, this is the same schedule that was used in the prior year. It was, the dates are exactly the same, but, you know, the last business day of the month, with the exception that this year, instead of paying, I mean, for fiscal 19, instead of paying at the end of June, we're paying at the middle of June. So...
So this schedule is exactly like the previous year, the year before that?
The only difference is accelerating the June payment.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. An interesting visit for Mr. Gudalgie-Yatroski was to be, to talk to the city treasurer and just find out how many accounts the school system has. They have no problem making payroll, making payments, because they have numerous accounts that they set on every, every day of the year, every month. That's from my recollection as being on the school board, plus talking to folks that have that information, namely the city treasurer. They have multiple accounts with millions of dollars sitting in there on a continuing basis.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it's the same schedule that we're following, but just in good faith, you think since we stated that the two groups would meet on this allocation schedule and it'd be approved after that, is it a necessity to vote tonight? Is it, does it have to be tonight, or does this need to be voted on tonight?
To answer your question, because you posted to me, I would say yes. And if there needs to be any adjustment, like, let's vote, we'll ask the city manager to check with her counterpart, and if it needs to be adjusted, bring it back to council.
That's fine.
Good. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. The motion carries. Mr. Pace, will you take that message back to Dr. Patton? Okay. Which brings us to item 18-241, the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance and other ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you read the title of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Fund Budget by authorizing the transfer of $125,000 from the Woodrow Wilson High School HVAC Cooling Tower Replacement Project to the Mount Hermit Elementary School Roof and HVAC Replacement Project.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter as our motion to adopt?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made to adopt and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-242, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And will you read the title of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an alcohol education and prevention grant in the amount of $2,500 from the Virginia Alcoholic Beverage Control Board and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to fund an alcohol education program.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt and it's been duly seconded. And the chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I think perhaps at a work session, it'd be good to have representative from the police department to come and share what that program consists of.
Okay. Dr. Meena, anybody against that? Mr. Pace, if you will take that message back. Or Dr. Patton? Any further discussion? We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-243, which is the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And will you read the title of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a Virginia Rules Camp Grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Virginia Attorney General's Office and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department for youth outreach.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption. Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 18-244, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance accepting funds. And would you read the title of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $220 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Social Services Fund for use by the Department of Social Services for RISB care.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Which brings us to item 18-245, which is the adoption of an ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And will you read the title of the ordinance, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding from the United States Department of Agriculture through the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $12,000 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Social Services Fund for the Elevate SNAP Employment and Training Pilot Project.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt and it's been seconded. And we do have one speaker, Mark Gudalgie-Yatroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, one last time, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow interested parties. This isn't going to take a lot of time. Usually, people who make that assertion lie, but it really won't. My question is, this is one of those benefit programs whereby you have to show that you are receiving training or engaged in work in order to qualify. And the grant fund, as I, as I read the background information, will go to participants in the form of a gas card so you can get to your classes or your work. And my question is, is that the only form of assistance that they could think of to provide? Is that, is that all that the grant requirement contains as an option? Because it would seem logical to me that you would want to tailor that to the needs of the recipient. So, for example, if the recipient doesn't have a car, would you not be able to give that person transit passes so they could use public transportation to get where they needed to go? The phrasing of the item looks as though the gas card was the only option provided. So if that is the case, it's not something our social services department has any control over, I would ask them to bubble up the line back to the originator whether they could make the substitution for those people who would benefit from that mode of transportation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the matter? The motion is to adopt. If you're in favor of the motion, please vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-246, which is the consideration of another ordinance. Will you read the title of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $10,200 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program.
Thank you. So we can consider this matter as our motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion on this motion, which has been made to adopt and seconded? Hearing none. If you're in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business, boards and commissions. And Councilman Moody, you have a report and nomination?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Move that the following reappointments and appointments be approved. Behavioral Healthcare Services Advisory Board, Denise Key, Margaret Mills, Marie Shepherd. History Commission, Sandra Barkley, Brooke Miller, George Raspberry IV. Community Criminal Justice Board, Tanya, Police Chief Tanya Chapman, James Cullen, Honorable Judge Roxy Holder, Deputy City Manager Vincent Jones, Tracy Link. Honorable Judge Johnny Morrison. Deputy William Rucker, Brenda Sprah. Hampton Roads Regional Jail. Honorable colleague and Councilman Nathan Clark. And yours truly would be the alternate. Parks and Recreation Commission, Samuel Blake. Portsmouth Parking Authority, James Overton. Social Services Advisory Commission, Angelia Allen. Wetlands Board, Donald Smith. Wetlands Board, Donald Smith. And these are appointments.
And we have Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yes, missed one there?
Alternates.
I don't have that page. Behavioral Health Services Advisory Board, Beverly Franklin, which is a consumer. And Board of Zoning Appeals, Paulette Franklin Jenkins, Barbara Smith.
And these are alternates?
Yes, these are appointments. Yep. Hampton Roads Transit, these are alternate staff appointment and Transportation Manager, Carl Jackson. Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Peter Adams, Dante Walson. Newport Development Authority, alternate, Willie Bamberg. Senior Services Advisory Board, Lynn Browley. Social Services Advisory Commission, Gracie Bowers and Harry Eisenegel. Wetlands Board, Patrick Gold. That's it.
Still correction needs to be made. I thought I heard under, under Behavioral Healthcare Services, I thought that was a whole. Is that correct, Ms. White?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I think a name was called.
Delete that name. Everybody in agreement on that? Okay. That's a whole.
Good catch.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion to make these appointments and reappointments. And it's been seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no.
I think something's up with the board.
You can vote now.
Okay.
There you go. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Collins. Brings us to 18248, item submitted by members of council. The Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, sir. Before we meet again, we all have several activities in the city. Of course, our Sunset Thursdays continue. This Thursday, June 28th, is Phase Two. The concerts are free. They're held at the foot of High Street, at High Street Landing, from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM. The following Thursday, July 5th, is a crowd favorite, raw jazz, and they continue through September. The Fourth of July is a week from tomorrow, July the 4th, of course, is a federal holiday. We have lots of activities around the city. We have in Craddock, of course, we're celebrating the 100th birthday of the community of Craddock. And the patriotic festival continues there at 8:30 AM. In Afton Square is the adorable children's bike parade. Maybe I shouldn't call it a children's bike parade. I do believe last year, the mayor and his wife rode in the bicycle parade. But anyway, it's a wonderful parade, full of bicycles, tricycles, and wagons, all decorated. And then after that little parade is finished, there'll be a patriotic sing-along, military bands, and some speeches in Afton Square. So I'd encourage all citizens to come and attend that. If you have additional questions, you can reach David Summers at 613-8254. And then later, that same evening on the Fourth of July, there will be a free concert at the foot of High Street, Ring-A-Lawn Chair, beginning at 5:30, Celeste Kellogg, beginning at 7:30, the Tidewater Concert Band. And then, of course, the fireworks will be on display in the Elizabeth River between Norfolk and Portsmouth at 9:30, weather permitting. So Fourth of July is a full day of festivities. And then the following Saturday, July the 7th, we have the Second Annual Shaggin' on High Street. And the sort of, I'll call them world famous, but certainly east coast famous embers will be playing at four o'clock in the afternoon at the corner of High and Court Streets for Dancing in the Street. And that will be followed a little later on, when they finish up about 7:00, there will be bands playing and DJs at Roger Brown's, at Griff's, at most of the restaurants up and down the street. So it'll be a fun time of dancing on High Street. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank those folks that came out to our coffee talk out at Bydawaye this past weekend. And I'd like to call on staff because we had a lot of good suggestions and concerns that were offered. I'd like to call upon staff to say how they will convey the information back to the citizens.
Mr. Pace?
Mr. Moody, in the past, when we've had coffee talk, what we normally do is take all the information from the person that's recording it, which I think Bernadette Hogg recorded the information. We will take that information shared with, internally with the departments, to make sure that they're responding to it. And after that, we can provide a report back to this council as to what the things that are happening with regard to how we move forward with those.
I would suggest that we also post that online, which would be good. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Report on pending items, item 18249. Mr. Pace, do we have any?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you. This brings us to 18250, non-agenda speakers. And our first speaker is Edward McCabe. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, honorable council members, and the public. My name is Ned McCabe. I live at 110 Tyler Crescent East in the Glen Sheila section of the city. I'm here to talk to you tonight about a capital campaign that we launched in late February to build a brand-new Ida Barber Early Learning Center. And the reason why I'm letting the pictures point toward the audience is you have the exact same pictures in the brochure I gave you. But those are the architectural drawings of the new building. Now, those of you that are familiar with Ida Barber and where it sits right now, we are in the old cafeteria section of the old Robert E. Lee Elementary School, which was built in the 1920s. Most of the school burnt down, and the cafeteria section was left. Now, I've been president of the Ida Barber Early Learning Center for quite a while now, and the cost to keep repairs on that building are really, really hitting us hard. So what we plan to do is if you look on page three, or the second page in the middle of your book, right here, you can see the architectural rendering of what the building will look like. The only thing missing is on that right side behind the playground, there will be a 4,000-square-foot addition for use by the community of Prentice Place, Prentice Park, and Brighton. The Wesley Center is getting very dated, and so we'd like to get a fresh, new facility for those neighborhood people to use. We'd also like to do parenting workshops and other things in there. Now, I'm not asking the city for any money. I'm here simply to get the word out. Now, what happened in February was the Portsmouth redevelopment and housing granted all of the land that Ida Barber, surrounds Ida Barber, that's all of ours now, free and clear. Once I got the land, that let me say that we are going ahead with our capital campaign. Now, how can people help? I will be able to give a person a donation sheet. And we're asking for people to become friends of Ida Barber. What that entails is you make a three-year pledge. For example, I did $100 a year for the next three years. So that's my pledge to Ida Barber Early Learning Center. We've had other people, Senator Louise Lucas and Lisa Lucas Burke, have made their pledges and their donations. So what we're doing is asking all of the citizens of Portsmouth that will help us to help us. Now, why should they do that for Ida Barber? It's just another early learning center. Well, it's really not. It was founded in 1910 by Ms. Ida Barber to take care of local children who were orphaned. And with the help of her church sewing circle, they were able to educate these children, get them ready for school. And over the years, they've had tremendous success for the people that leave Ida Barber and go on to kindergarten, on to college, et cetera. We are a United Way organization. That's another thing that we work on. And the last thing is, we help the most underserved children in the city of Portsmouth. Most of our children come to us directly from social services, and they're on a sliding fee scale. And most of them, all the parents have to pay for is their co-pay that social services decides that that's what it is. So I don't want to take a lot of your time. I just wanted to kick this off. If any of you have any questions for me, you know how to reach me. And I hope you all send me a donation card in, so, filled in, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Mr. McCabe, if you would, you've got about 40 people in the audience who are seeing your nice posters. But the thousands who watch this on TV, turn that poster around for just a minute and go back to the podium so that the camera can get that on the television, if you will, so the rest of the citizens can see what you're trying to talk about. There you go. Thank you.
And the Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Ned, here you go.
Oh, you already filled it in?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you move those now to the side?
Yes.
Please.
I want you to tell the folks to turn these things that they'll go away to.
The next speaker is Pam Phillips. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, and members of council. I just came to talk about the, actually, two things. One's the poverty forum that happened this past Thursday. I was present. A lot of the people that are here were actually present for that. But it was noted by citizens that while it was a forum for the citizens to have a conversation with the consulting firm, that none of the members of council were there, and it was very much noted. I understand all of our schedules are busy. The third Thursday of each month is packed with events. But I just wanted to let you know that it was noticed by some of the citizens. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about was last night's presentation from the Tom and Group, especially about Amazon and what that company can offer our city as far as tax revenue. But one of the things that, having been in multiple Amazon distribution centers, having equipment in multiple Amazon distribution centers, one of the things that doesn't get talked about is kind of the downside to the workforce. They hire mainly a very underdeveloped workforce. It's people that don't have other job skills out there, and that makes up the bulk of their employees. Between that and contracted workers, just to kind of keep that in consideration as you look at who to try to bring in as far as economic development, that there are some ups and downs to everyone. And that particular one I've got intimate knowledge with, management does not stay with Amazon typically for longer than 18 months. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Phillips, thank you for your concern on the poverty thing. I think the majority of council that night was at a police officer awards banquet, and some of our police heroes were honored that night. And the poverty initiative actually came from this council. That's one of our initiatives to see what we can do to identify all the various things that cause it and try to address it, alleviate it, the best that we can. So that's where we were. We weren't out boogying in the street or anything. We were at a police function. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. This morning was the annual meeting of the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission meeting. It was a very interesting meeting because there was a presentation given by one of the commissioners, Chris Goulisson. Chris is the Economic Development Manager of the Virginia Port Authority. He gave us an overview of the Newport News Marine Terminal, the Crane Island Marine Terminal, the Norfolk International Terminal, the Virginia International Gateway Terminal, and the Portsmouth Marine Terminal. To learn that Crane Island has 600 acres of land and 522 acres of state-of-the-art terminal was unbelievable. The Crane Island Terminal has 8,400 feet of wharf, seven berths, 28 S-class container cranes, on-dock intermodal transfer facility, 5 million TEU capacity, and 16 billion in national economic development benefits. The port community includes many players and one goal. The goal, a safe, sustainable, and successful Commonwealth economy. The port community players include beneficial cargo owners, ocean carriers, barge partners, schools, environmental partners, Virginia Maritime Association, Go Virginia, the Coast Guard, Virginia Economic Development Partnerships, the Navy, local, state, and federal governments, motor carriers, International Longshoremen's Association, pilots, and rail partners. So you see how we, the people of Portsmouth, are a world-class maritime center. We need to put the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission as our number-one commission because its mission is to promote Portsmouth as a world-class maritime center by the development and expansion of maritime and supporting industries in the city of Portsmouth. To do this, we need to start communicating our message loud and clear. When the elected and appointed are sitting around the conference table, the microphones need to pick up all voices loud and clear. Instead, the voices of the elected and appointed are not picked up. They appear to be talking only with each other. They appear to be talking only with each other. Let's get these microphones amped up so we, the people, can hear the good news. We, the people of Portsmouth, are a world-class maritime center city. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. And the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a point of clarification, because we are so proud of our port, Ms. Si, we heard a similar report tonight at the work session. It's not the Craney Island Port that is so large and has all the wonderful containers. That is the Virginia International Gateway. The Craney Island Port facility won't be built out for another 20 years or so. So just to clarify that.
Thank you, ma'am. And our last speaker is Frank Thompson. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, City Council, and fellow citizens. My name is Frank Thompson, and I live at 326 Douglas Avenue here in Portsmouth. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Portsmouth. I was born in Portsmouth, raised in Portsmouth. I received a fantastic education from Portsmouth Public Schools. And I remained in Portsmouth as I got my bachelor's degree and PhD from Old Dominion and pursued teaching jobs at Thomas Nelson, TCC, and currently at Norfolk Collegiate School. I have been a strong advocate for our city. I've served on two civic leagues, Neighborhood Watch, president of Craddock Little League for three years, and have been a coach and mentor to youth in our community for over 12 years. I've always believed in our city, and even when many others didn't always believe in the city. But I'm here tonight to tell you why I'm giving up on the city and why my family is leaving next month. My dad's house is set to be auctioned off on Thursday at 6:00 PM. This house has been my family for almost 100 years, through five generations. The taxes were faithfully paid in this house for over 70 years, without a single hiccup until 2010. Two things happened in 2010. The first was just unfortunate. My dad was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease, and he went to the hospital for the first time that year. The second item, however, has at least some blame, I feel, to be assigned to city officials, present company not among them. And this item deals with my dad's real estate taxes. They tripled in a five-year period from about $60 per month on a $54,000 assessment, which was about 5% of his fixed $1,000-a-month social security income, to almost $200 a month, which was about 20% of his income. With his mounting medical bills, you can probably see it didn't take long for him to fall behind under such a significant increase, which there certainly was a real estate boom then. But as you'll see in a minute, that, that increase apparently was not accurate. By the time I find out, found out in 2013, he was already over $3,000 in debt. I immediately contacted the treasurers and the assessor's office, and they admitted that a mistake had been made, and they adjusted his assessment by almost half. But they refused to adjust his previously overbilled taxes, and obviously, he was already in a hole. It was at this time that I moved myself and my family into his house to help take care of his medical needs and also to try to settle his affairs. I have paid over $8,000 from my modest teacher salary over the last three years, but his debt barely went down. When I've requested receipts, invoices, and itemized statements of where my money was going, I have been continuously rebuffed and have yet to receive this information. I have currently saved another $6,000, but the attorney and city treasurer have refused to meet with me despite multiple emails, phone calls, and stops by the office during my planning bells and lunch breaks over the past six months. I was finally, in interest of full disclosure, able to meet with the city treasurer today, but only because, after calling all week and being told he wouldn't be able to meet with me, I went to his office and sat down and said I would just wait there until he was available, if he was. And luckily, I'm a teacher. I'm on summer break. I had the luxury to do this. So on Thursday, my wife, my two kids, and I will, unless something happens, and I'm hopeful that it does, we will begin preparations to leave Portsmouth for good as our house will be auctioned off, my dad's house will be auctioned off, despite our best efforts to stay as contributing members of our community. My 81-year-old father will lose his family home in the place where he wanted to spend his final days. I will personally lose my faith in a city that I have supported through thick and thin. The house we live in will be probably, will be auctioned off and possibly fall victim to the blight and neglect that plagues so many other homes in our city. I realize that our city needs to pay its bills. I'm doing my best to try to make it right. But there has to be a little bit of rationality when it comes to making decisions such as these. The citizens are ultimately what will bring our city back to greatness or keep it there. And this experience has really opened up my eyes as to where, where we stand in the eyes of some city officials. And that's all I have to say this evening. I really thank you for your audience. I just, in this time, thought that, that somebody should know sort of what one citizen is going through. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have no further business, and this meeting is adjourned.